All right, I guess I've got 5:32.
Ring the bell.
You guys have, I don't have any bell to ring.
It's Adam.
So, we'll just welcome everybody tonight to this budget work session. And I've got a couple of things I'd like to throw out at you before we get started. Because we're going to be faced with decisions which will have an effect on Franklin for the coming year, possibly several years in the future. We must look to the future. Just to say tonight, we'll keep everything as it is because that is good enough, we'll no longer cut it. This remaining where we are will not keep us on top involved. We must look at where we're going and how we're going to get there. We may well have to face an unstable economy, emerging issues we cannot predict with accuracy, new civic cultures, new ways of collaborating across party and geopolitical boundaries, and massive changes in our local healthcare. We must be in a stable financial condition to face these changes and capitalize on the opportunities that will be presented as a result of these challenges. We're seeing new residents with varying cultural, political, and assorted lifestyles. We must remain in tune to these changes and not look at them as obstacles but as opportunities. As such, we must remain fiscally responsible while at the same time becoming more comfortable with our financial standing but being careful not to be frivolous. We must recognize that Franklin is changing and we as the town's governing board must change with it. We can do this as long as we do not get in the mindset of everything is fine the way it is. We need to do more than just get by. With the future in mind and your participation, I'm asking you tonight for a four cent increase in the in the millage. A week ago, I raised this issue and I was given the task of justifying it by naming specific projects, projects and items we need. This is what we need to make up the $238,000 shortfall which will require us to dip into our fund balance, a practice which has many towns on the local government commission's watch list statewide, and one nearby town which is in danger of losing its charter. We need an additional police car, that's $38,000. A new police truck, $38,000. The McCloskey Foundation, $5,000. The nonprofit funding pool, $40,000. Picking on the Square, $28,500. Chamber of Commerce fireworks, $4,000. Chamber of Commerce membership fee, $3,000. Legal advertising, $9,000. And festivals and events, our movie nights, $3,000. The town Christmas tree has got to be replaced, that's $10,000. On the streets, we need another new vehicle, that's $35,000. We need $6,400 worth of salt. The J.C. Park concrete slab is $7,500. The J.C. Park interior renovation is $5,000. Franklin Garden Club, $3,000. Town beautification, $3,000. The Brian anti-ice sprayer, $11,000. The V-Box salt spreader, $13,000. Banners, $9,000. A new roof on the gazebo, it's $10,000. The Whitmire property cleanup is $10,000. The mound maintenance is $6,000. The portable restroom is $23,000, and that's the cost only. Does not include maintenance, storage, or overtime or an employee to operate it. That total comes to $244,000, which you asked me to provide you all. We also are looking at a comprehensive land use plan, which is not in the budget anywhere at this point, $80,000, which brings it up to $324,000. We need to put in the crosswalks at an estimated $40,000, and I'm hopeful the county's going to put in the four crosswalks in front of the courthouse for another $40,000. So, the total runs up right now to $364,000. Bottom line is this, we can dip into the fund balance to make up the shortfall, or we can get a four cent increase to generate $240,000 to void getting into our fund balance. I'm willing to assume the blame for four cent increase. I do not see how we can ignore the danger from dipping into fund balance for any amount. If we cannot get the four cents, then I would suggest you take this list and decide what or where we can cut to keep from reducing our fund balance. Or you can keep everything as presented and make up the shortfall from the fund balance, or you can cut services in town positions. The issue is whether is whether we remain in financial tatters or whether we govern from a position of sound financial renewal. Madam Manager, would you give us your budget message, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Board. Kind of where we'd kind of like to take the board tonight is, if you give me just a moment, just to kind of, I think the budget message highlights most of the expenditures, and then we'll kind of do a brief synopsis page by page, just so you can see where some of those expenditures are, and then that'll open up questions too for the board as well if you see something you want to ask about in a specific department. So with that, if you would, with your notebooks, we can turn to the first page. "The town is committed to providing quality services in a cost-effective manner to all citizens. The town of Franklin continues to operate in sound financial condition with a stable fund balance. At the close of fiscal year 2016-2017, available fund balance as percent of expenditures of general fund was at 51%. This budget addresses equipment and infrastructural needs for the town of Franklin. General government revenue sources are estimated to remain the same with the exception of the franchise tax. Franchise tax is projected to decrease $10,000. The biggest contributor to the decrease in franchise tax revenue is that more people are eliminating landlines from their homes and relying solely on cell phones. The town should continue to plan for unexpected revenue loss at the state and federal level. This budget allot's $50,000 in contingency in anticipation of unexpected revenue loss or unexpected expenditures. This budget, the current ad valorem tax rate of 28 cents per $100 evaluation, was used to balance fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. The town of Franklin will need to use $239,211 in general fund balance for fiscal year 2018-2019 to balance. The town should be cautious when using fund balance. The town also continues to experience slow growth in water and sewer revenues. It is paramount that the town of Franklin ensures water and sewer revenues can sustain expenditures in order to maintain existing infrastructure and planning needs for future water and sewer infrastructure. The town should also carefully prepare for unanticipated loss of revenues. Therefore, diligently maintaining a stable fund balance is key to long-term financial success." Personnel. This budget calls for a 2% cost of living and a 1% one-time payment based on salary for all positions. The 1% one-time payment is suggested for December 2018. The town's health insurance, dental, property, and workers' compensation premiums are expected to remain at current budgeted rates. The town of Franklin will continue with med cost health insurance and dental insurance for fiscal year 2018-2019. Effective July 1, 2018, the Streets Department will report directly to town administration since this budget is funded with ad valorem taxes. A physician from the Water and Sewer Department has been transferred to the Streets Department. This is not a new physician in the Streets Department, and there will be no need to replace the physician in the Water and Sewer Department. This physician is and has been operating the Streets Department for several years but has been paid from Water and Sewer Fund. This will allow the Streets Department to focus more on projects regarding repairs to town streets and sidewalks. Capital projects. The town will continue working on Phase 1 of the water treatment plant upgrade and expansion project. Phase 1 of the water treatment plant expansion is estimated to be completed by December 2018. The first debt service payment on this project will be due this coming fiscal year 2018-2019. Capital outlay equipment. Funds have been budgeted in the facilities budget for a portable restroom trailer in the amount of $23,000. The town has utilized the restrooms located in Macon County Courthouse for several years, and due to security concerns, the restrooms located in Macon County Courthouse will no longer be open to the public on the weekends. Therefore, the town must look at alternative restroom options for picking on the square that is held every weekend from May to October, along with numerous other town-sponsored festivals. Funds have also been budgeted in the Streets Department for a snow and ice pre-treatment brine sprayer in the amount of $11,000. The town has also secured a contract with NCDOT to purchase brine. Capital outlay improvements. Funds have been budgeted to replace the roof at the gazebo. There are few options to look at when replacing the roof. Currently cedar shakes are on the gazebo. Options to replace the roof include metal, shingles, or cedar shakes. This budget allot's $10,000 to look at roof replacement for the gazebo. Funds have also been budgeted at $9,000 to replace the town of Franklin banners. This will be Phase 2. The town is currently working to replace some of the banners in this current fiscal year 17-18. Funds have been budgeted at $9,000 to remove debris from the Whitmire property. The town will also need to look at replacing the large Christmas tree that is used during the annual tree lighting ceremony. The current Christmas tree is over 10 years old and is starting to fade and shed. The average life for this type of tree is between five and eight years. The current tree has exceeded this. Administration has been seeking quotes for replacement tree, and like the tree that is currently owned by the town, the lowest bid is at $10,000. Improvements to Memorial Park continue in fiscal year 2018-2019. This budget allot's $7,500 to pour a new concrete slab in the pavilion area of Memorial Park. Water runoff and water stagnation have become an issue with the current concrete slab. Funds have been budgeted in Powell Bill for the town bridge improvements. The town of Franklin approved a betterment contract with NCDOT December 7, 2015 in the amount of $36,000. Capital outlay vehicles. The police department will be replacing one detective vehicle with over 100,000 miles. The Streets Department will be replacing one pickup truck with over 100,000 miles. Contributions. Nonprofit funding for community organizations are left at current budgeted total of $40,000. Economic development funds have been reduced to $5,000. Picking on the Square is left at current total budget of $28,500. The first Friday night movie series is budgeted at $3,000. The Franklin Area Chamber of Commerce contribution is left at current budgeted total of $4,000. Debt service. All debt service payments are budgeted as required by law. General debt service principal is budgeted at $170,931 and interest at $22,051. Fire debt service principal is budgeted at $72,292 and interest at $2,276. Water and sewer debt service principal is budgeted at $833,828 and interest at $202,829. The town secured a $3,297,120 loan through the North Carolina State Revolving Loan Fund for upgrades and expansions to the water plant. The first debt service payment is due fiscal year 2018-2019. The debt service payment for the water plant is $164,857. The SunTrust loan for general water and sewer projects was entered into 2012 and will be paid in 2024. The current loan amount for SunTrust is $2379,760.90. Bank of America for water and sewer projects was entered into in 2010 and will be paid in 2025. The current total loan amount for Bank of America is $1782,864.14. State Revolving Loan Fund for the wastewater treatment plant was entered into in 2013 and will be paid in 2033. Their current total loan amount for this project is $4654,307. Diversified Lenders loan for the new software at Town Hall was entered into 2017 and will be paid in 2020. The current total loan amount for Diversified Lenders is $90,764.28. PNC and Integra Bank fire truck loan was entered into in 2011 and will be paid in 2020. The current total loan amount for the fire trucks will be $149,133.5. The water treatment plant revolving loan was entered into 2018 and will be paid in 2038. The current total loan amount for the project is $3297,128. By department, the fire department. The current fire tax rate of 0.054 cents per $100 valuation is recommended for this fiscal year of 2018-2019. Based on the current fire tax, no fund balance is needed to balance this fiscal year for 2018-2019. Franklin Fire Department needs to replace existing fleet that is approaching service life. Funds have been budgeted in the amount of $38,000 to replace a 2004 Tahoe with 165,000 miles. Also, fire call pay for volunteers is expected to remain at current rates. Current rates are $5 for medical calls and $12 for fire calls. Water and sewer department. Funds are budgeted to replace the water line at Grandview Court and the water line Creek Crossing for the NCDOT project R5734. The cost anticipated to replace the above referenced water lines is $90,000. Funds are also budgeted to rebuild a sewer pump station at Prentis. The cost anticipated to replace the above referenced sewer pump station is $85,000. All the above referenced projects are part of the town's capital improvements plan. The basin at the water plant only needs to be cleaned every five years. However, this budget allot's funding of $30,000 this fiscal year. The reason for this is to continue our reserve account for this project in preparation of cleaning and the drainage basin for fiscal year 2018-2019. The total cost estimate to clean the basin is $150,000. Funds have also been budgeted in the amount of $66,600 in the Public Works Department to replace two pickup trucks with over 100,000 miles each. Water and sewer rates. Based on current estimates, water and sewer revenue combined are projected at $3970,170. A modest appropriation from water and sewer retained earnings of $438,289 is recommended. Martin and McGill completed a detailed water and sewer study in January 2015. In order to maintain the existing infrastructure to upgrade, expand the water plant, and to continue funding the town's comprehensive improvement plan, a modest water and sewer rate increase is recommended. A 4% rate increase is recommended for water and sewer. The proposed rate increases only affect base and volume charges but not tap, connection, or other miscellaneous charges. In conclusion, this budget for local fiscal year 2018-2019 is balanced as required by law and continues to provide existing services while meeting the governing board's priorities and policies. This budget includes an appropriation in general fund of $440,000 for Powell Bill. This budget recommends a one-time appropriation from general fund balance of $239,211 to address the town's capital outlay equipment, capital outlay improvement, and infrastructural needs. This budget addresses the town's immediate needs while maintaining a stable fund balance and providing quality services in a cost-effective manner.
Well, Ben. Thank you, Ben. I would like to say one thing about vehicles belonging to towns. It may not seem like it's a lot of mileage, but they probably sat there in idle for 200,000 more miles. That's something you have to take into consideration. It's the time on the engine as much as it is on your speedometer, so. Okay, Madam Manager, where you think we should go now?
Okay.
Starting through the book?
Yeah, if the board would, we'll just kind of highlight. If you see something that you want to stop and ask questions about, please stop us. If you feel like we're not giving enough detail, let us know. If it's too much, tell us it's too much. So, real quick, your next page is going to be your revenues. And if you'll look, the total general fund is at $4,58,687 for general fund this year. The fire department fund is at $827,599. The water and sewer enterprise fund is at $3970, $3,970,170. TDA is at $129,000. And we need to look at TDA, we'll come to that a little bit later on. So, the total budget for the town of Franklin this year is at $8,985,456. Your next page on Schedule 1, Page 1, it's just a comparison of where you are with your ad valorem taxes between years and the total anticipated revenue for 18-19 based on 17-18 is recommended to stay the same. Your other taxes, which include your motor vehicle, vehicle rental, local option sales tax, and local business registration, is recommended the same at $763,000. The franchise tax, as noted in the message, is estimated to decrease by about $10,000, so you'll see the difference there. Restricted intergovernmental revenue, which is your Powell Bill and ABC law enforcement, is projected to remain at $130,000. On Schedule 1, Page 2, your licenses and permits are as recommended to stay at the current rate of $3,500. Other revenues, your investment earnings, we're projecting a slight increase. Your rents, a slight decrease. We have pulled some rents that was currently going into general fund for the fire department's teahouse. Those rents now will go directly to the fire department. The beer ABC store profit is suggested to remain the same at $70,000. The beer and wine excise tax at $17.5. The sale of equipment and miscellaneous, just what we're aware of for this year, you're going to see a little bit of a decrease around $1,000. The administration reimbursement has been decreased as well. The part of the decrease there is again with the fire department. Currently, the fire department was taking $5,000 and putting it back into general fund. We've since changed that, so now the fire department will not be making a contribution into general fund. The local room occupancy sales tax is recommended to be the same, same with court costs. Now, special events, the reason I wanted to talk about this one. So, we anticipate $5,000, but again with Pumpkin Fest and some of the events that the town charges vendors, that can always increase or decrease. So, you'll see this current year was at $15,707. So, Kyra and I are trying to be conservative in our estimate for this upcoming year. As far as insurance settlements, refunds, contributions, and donations, nothing has been budgeted this year. Those are just items that came in throughout the year, so that's why you see a decrease in total anticipated revenue of $208,500. Then, of course, your fund balance appropriated is at $239,211. This current year for 17-18, we had originally recommended $133,487, but after myself and our finance officer have sat down and looked at everything, we always try to underestimate revenues and overestimate expenditures, and at this point in time, I believe Kyra and I feel comfortable in telling the board, you will not be taking anything from fund balance this year. So, the $130,000 that was budgeted, we should not use that this year. The fund balance for Powell Bill is left at $450,000. So, the revenue is at $689,211, which brings your total general fund budget to $4,58,687. Any questions on revenue before we move into kind of an overview of expenditures? Okay. The first one we have is Schedule 1, Page 1, this is governing body. Really, you can see that it's a decrease from this current year. The biggest thing is in your economic development, that's where your Nicwasi initiative was. It was at $12,500, and this year we were able to do $5,000 unless the board wants to look at that. Your nonprofit funding pool's been left the same. Picking on the Square is at $28,500, and the Chamber of Commerce, that's where the fireworks are budgeted at. As far as the dues and subscriptions, the $12,000, that includes your membership fee to the Chamber, School of Government, and your basic membership fees. Any questions in governing board? And this is the council and the mayor's budget that you work with them. That's who's in the department, the salary and wages.
The only one I would have there is, I think we've mentioned it before, the fireworks, if that could come out of TDA, let TDA pay for that. I don't know that it benefits the town where it is, but maybe the TDA.
I know that TDC pays the county's portion of it.
Right, right.
Well, that would be great.
Well, if we give $4,000 off your fireworks, shouldn't we get a free membership to the Chamber of Commerce for that?
We pay membership too. Hold that thought, we'll probably come back to that.
Okay, moving on, administration. Schedule 2, Page 2, you're going to see a significant decrease here.
We're not under expenditures amount.
No, take him back to the beginning.
Let's go.
Go back to the very beginning. Yep. Here.
You're just too eager.
So, the biggest decrease in administration is salary and wages. And the reason you see that is when we consolidated our tax department, we removed that employee from administration, and now they're solely just in the tax department. So, that's why you see the decrease in administration, because they've assumed duties in the tax department.
Even though we have a proposed COLA of 2%, our actual salaries and wages will be less?
In this line item, yeah. And that's really kind of the biggest change. Now, something else you're going to notice, under the council, community relations and employee relations, and I should have noted that in the governing body, something the auditors have talked to Kyra and I about, anytime the board wants to do like a retirement party or any type of recognition of an employee or a member of the community, we thought it would be best to put that into our community relations line because in the past, it's been paid from supplies, and we certainly don't want to run into a Buncombe County situation to where we can't say what's what. So, this is why you see those new line items to account for that. Any questions on this particular budget? Okay. Next is finance. You'll see a slight increase in finance. The biggest thing there is just your part-time salaries. This again is where we utilize, we utilize Ms. Evelyn Suther to come in and assist our finance officer if needed. We hopefully may not have to use that, but that's there in case with the rebow coming up if we did need to utilize her. That's your biggest difference right there. Any questions about this particular budget? Okay. The tax and billing, it went down a little bit. This is from the tax overpayments and refunds. And again, this is basically where we took the one employee from administration, and they're solely just in this budget. Any questions for tax and billing? Okay. Legal and elections. The reason, if you'll notice, your professional services seemed a little high, the $92,000 for 17-18. This is where the board did a budget amendment to pay for those two homes that were demolished on Hillcrest and also on Paulina Avenue. It was, we did a budget amendment from your contingency to increase that, and that's where those expenses were paid from. As far as the election expense, we don't have that this year. And then legal advertising, we upped that just a little bit because that's more on point, but still with that, you're at $72,500, which is less than last year.
Don't we anticipate at the end of the day, maybe being able to recoup some of that money?
Yes, sir.
From the sale eventually of the land?
Yes, sir, you're right on.
Will that just go back into general fund?
It will, because that's where it was paid from. And of course, that'll be a budget amendment to the board, but Mr. Collins is absolutely correct. Facilities, you're going to see an increase here. Again, your biggest increase is going to be under property maintenance is the first one. We were at $6,000, and that's the cost to do Nicwasi Mound. This year, we've included the cost for Nicwasi Mound and also the debris removal at Whitmire property. So, that's why there's a large increase there. The capital outlay equipment is the other biggest one, that is where the portable restroom's been budgeted. So, that's your biggest contributor for that particular budget increasing for those two line items.
So, the property maintenance includes the $9,000 for removal of the debris, but we don't have anything budgeted for mowing?
No, we do, yes, that includes, that includes all of that. Oh, no, no, let me back up, I misunderstood. No, that does not have anything for the mowing of Whitmire. Now, with our hopefully revamped Streets crew, we could do that in-house if the board wants to talk about that. If you would let us know, you know, do you want it mowed weekly? Like, what does the board want to do? Hopefully, we could do that in-house though without that being an additional expense.
Don't you think that when you mow it and they get used to mowing it, the men who do it will know what schedule needs to?
Yeah.
For their equipment, you know, for their equipment.
And they'll get better at it too.
Yeah.
They'll get quick.
And the more it's cared for, the more people will use it.
Right.
Do we need to budget that though, or we can just say, start mowing it?
I think we're fine, and if that's the will of the board, kind of a consensus, we can start that.
Out of the Streets Department?
Mm-hmm. I think that's right.
The Indian mound, $6,000.
Yes, sir.
That's just the mowing.
Do we farm that out?
We do, we contract that out.
Just the mound, Ricky mows around the bay?
Correct.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay. Next is the IT budget, and that remains the same for this year, for the $60,300. There wasn't really any significant increases there. If we've got any questions there? If we've got any questions there?
So, there's nothing in this budget for salaries like?
No, not in IT.
In ITs, and that's just?
Because we have consolidated that position to where your planner serves both IT director and planner, so their salaries is in the planning department.
Like to talk about getting him a little bit of help.
Yeah.
Lucky we have a planner that knows how to do.
Yes, we are, and he's very good at it. The police department, you're going to see an increase there. Really, kind of the two biggest thing there is their insurance and bonds. This is the 8100 that they pay for the flood insurance. By law, we're required to have that flood insurance since the police department and fire department are now considered to be one parcel, according to FEMA, and there's debt, of course, owed only on the police department, so.
Go ahead, Joe. If we wanted to theoretically un-adopt those maps, we wouldn't have to pay flood insurance?
You still have to, yeah, because it's a commercial.
Okay.
Because prior to this, and I'm glad Kyra whispered that, prior to this, the town did, I had about, I'd almost forgot that, we did have to pay.
So, even before the town adopted the flood maps, which are spotty at best, okay, so we'd have to pay it regardless?
You would, and at one time, it was really difficult when we first went into this. The town actually contacted the Lloyds of London there for a while to do this for them, but now, we've since not got away from that. But that's your, one of your biggest contributors there, and then your capital outlay vehicle. Other than that, that's not really an increase there.
I see the fuel has gone up. Is that the case across the board? Have you, are you budgeting more for fuel?
Yes, in anticipation, because it's.
Gas going up.
Mm-hmm. And that department has the most utilized fleet, so we decided they needed a little bit of a cushion there.
Bicycles.
And we do have two bicycles.
Electric.
Your law enforcement officer separation, that's projected to remain the same. Real quick, maybe for those who are not familiar with that, by state statute, anyone who retires in law enforcement, that has 30 years of service in law enforcement and is below the age of 62, by law, the town has to pay those employees until they reach the age of 62. And currently, we have two employees that are retired from the town, but by law, we have to pay them a separation pay. Streets and maintenance, okay, this is where you're going to see your biggest increase. The first point is with the salary and wages. That's where we took the individual that was currently working in the streets department but being paid out of the water and sewer fund. So, overall picture, it's a wash, but in general, it looks more elevated. A couple other, and of course, utilities in some of these lines, you'll notice we budgeted some more, because I know that Duke and a couple others have anticipated a rate increase. The biggest thing here is going to be your capital outlay vehicle. That there, the streets department, for those who probably saw them riding around, it's a 2,000 pickup truck, and three men are trying to ride in a single bed, so it would be really nice if we could get them a truck in that department. Your capital outlay improvements, that's your other big expenditure right here. That is looking at doing the second replacement of the banners. We have ordered half the banners for right now, and they should be in in a couple weeks. But this part here, there's $9,000 in there, and that should continue to replace the other half of the banners in town.
The ones on the light poles and stuff?
Yes, sir.
What are they going to look like?
Tony's working on some designs. They'll be, Tony's got a good eye for this.
What are we doing with the ones we're taking down?
Well, that's up to the board. Right now, when we take them down, some of them, we can keep, we can.
Is there any value to them?
Yeah. I could sell them. I mean, there's some value. I wouldn't mind having, you know, some just for.
And you could, and we could maybe, you know, offer that.
Get a big quilt out of them.
The excess that you have, we could put on Gov. deals.
Could.
You could.
There's a lot of Franklinson.
There is, that's just one in every state.
Quite out of the North Carolina part.
Your other big expenditure right there is the Christmas tree. I have worked diligently with Tony Angel. He's went above and beyond trying to research quotes to replace existing tree and get one just like what we have. The best we're able to do is 10,000. And then, of course, the capital outlay equipment, that's your brim spreader that we were looking at for the 11,000. But those, the lease payment two right there, the 18,250, that is where we lease one backhoe, so you'll see that in streets and then water and sewer.
I have a couple of questions about this one. The capital outlay vehicle, just kicking the can down the road, but I think most dealerships offer 0% financing. Would it be better for us to pay that over time, or is it better just to bite the bullet and pay out 35 upfront?
We've done it both ways. Couple of years ago, we did that with the police department, and from our discussions with the auditor and from our revenues, it seems it's best to bite the bullet, and if we have it within budget, go ahead and buy it, since it's one vehicle. We've done that with two before in the police department.
And it could be. I think you and I both have an idea. We'd like to get some sidewalk work done. It could be like a flatbed truck, maybe.
There we go.
My point is, it may be a used truck. Maybe the best value is a used vehicle, and then they wouldn't offer 0% financing on it.
Gotcha, so it's not just going to be a F-150?
No, no, no.
It'll be something we can actually do some?
That's the goal, and you know, after talking to our engineer, he's worked really closely with me, trying to figure out what's best to try and get some of this work up and going.
You're warming me to that idea. Another question I had is, are we anticipating, I know we had talked about it briefly, the possibility of streetlights going down the gateway corridor when DOT does from McDonald's to the New Ingles?
Yes, that is something that we've been working on with DOT and Duke Power. That will have to be an agreement that'll come to the board. I could see that maybe in the next two to four months. Again, though, with this agreement, I don't see the town, just like the bridge replacement we did with DOT, I don't see that you would have to pay for it this fiscal year. It'd probably be at the end of the completion of that project.
Okay.
But you will, the board will be seeing something in a few months, because they've been working on the minutia of getting it together.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay. POW bill, so a couple of things here, and POW bill, where we noted in the budget, the $36,000 for the DOT bridge replacement that the town committed to, the betterment, it will come from the POW bill. This is where we've allotted that. But basically, it's the same at 450,000.
If the gas tax had remained the same what it used to be, it would be more, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir.
So, basically, we do have a loss of POW bill funds.
You would, yes. Planning and economic development, it went up slightly, and the reason being is your contracted services right there. In contracted services, it's not a lot, but it's a little bit for our planner to do something if he has a minimum housing code violation. That's a little bit of a cushion in case there was an issue that the town needed to look at from a minimum housing or a nuisance abatement. We don't know of anything right offhand, but we all know how those can rear their head, so that's just a little bit of a cushion right there at 4,000. Memorial Park, stream restoration, you'll notice that 1718's at 14,487. Mr. Collins and I have been looking at this with some of the things at Memorial Park. One thing that we do need to try and get finished by the end of this year is to get this grant spent. That's been our goal. We've had it for three or four years, so we're going to look at, see if we can't do something around maybe like a walkway or something that Mr. Collins and I'll work on, but that's why you see zero for this upcoming years. We hope to do something further with the stream restoration.
How much of that grant do we have available?
Is it right at 11,000 now? We've spent a little bit.
I think they spent a little bit more than that, but between 10 and 11.
Yeah. What's tricky about it, it has to, we've tried everything to get it down, but it strictly has to benefit the stream restoration.
So, a bridge coming across to?
Tried, I've tried, yeah.
Get a walkway for the sidewalk.
Only if you can get certain critters to live underneath it.
Shake your stream?
That's true. That's very true. Festivals and events, we've increased supplies a little bit. That's again, you know, maybe looking at a couple new Christmas decorations with the new tree, and then, of course, your supplies, that's also where we do our fall decorations. And I think last year, it seemed to be a little bit more successful, because we tried to put a little bit more in it and got a little bit more compliments on it. Other than that, it's at 76,300.
Where does the contribution come from?
Okay, the contribution, that's what runs, basically, that's any of the things for Pumpkin Fest, like the entertainers that we have for Pumpkin Fest. If we have any street characters or anything for Winter Wonderland, that's where that contribution comes from, is that's what that goes to pay, I should say.
Goes to, yeah. Sorry.
That's on me. Traffic, that's, we've got one part-time position in there, and that's been the same for many years, and their budget's still holding strong at 18,600. Retired group insurance, with our switch to med cost mid-budget year because of the Blue Cross situation, we were able to save a little bit right there. It was at 41,780. This year's projected at 39,600, so it's a little bit of a savings.
Thanks, Ron Paulus.
Are the children boys still receiving the same benefits that they wouldn't have?
They are. Actually, it's a, we were on an 80/20 plan, now it's 85/15. Your debt service for general is budgeted. Principal and interest is a total of 192,982, and then your contingencies at 50,000, which brings your budget to your balanced revenues of 4,58,687. Do we want to keep going, or do you want to stop there and talk about general for a little bit? Okay. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the board, what questions you may have.
Well, Bob, I've thought about your desire for a 4-cent tax increase. I was kind of grumpy that day, because it was the day I was doing my taxes, and I wasn't in a very good mood to think about tax increases, but I really think that we need to do it. I would be for it. I agree, we don't need to keep, you know, taking money out of the fund balance. I'm glad we didn't have to do it this year. That's a good thing. But there are so many things that we just can't do because we're so tight. I really appreciate the town's support for the Niquosi and all of the corridor projects that are going on with the Cherokees, but I feel like the development of East Franklin is something that's so key to the future of the town, that we should really be taking the leadership role in all of that, or more of a leadership role in all of that. These things just all take, well, they take energy, but they also take money. And things like the planner, I know Justin, I was talking to him the other day, spends three-quarters of his time on, you know, being a cop, just policing problems with things that don't meet our codes, and that doesn't leave him very much time for the other hats he's wearing, like IT and actually doing planning, and especially if we're going to do the comp plan, which I think is very, very important for the future of the town. We need to have adequate money to take care of that. So, anyway.
Now, that comp plan was not in that.
That's right. I didn't include that in any of the.
The Niquosi outlay's in there either.
Just 5,000. If I may, real quick, just some of the cuts that we did make was the one police vehicle, we cut contingency by 10,000, we cut the salt spreader out at 13,000. Economic development, we took out 7,500. Memorial Park's now down to, we cut out 3,000. The planning contract service, we cut 1,000, and tax overpayments with 1,000. So, the budget that you see had already had 71,500 cut out of it, and if I may, real quick, I've made some printouts just for, just for information only. It shows the millage rate over the years. Now, keep in mind, in the 60s and 70s, the town wasn't what it is now by no means, but it kind of gives the board just an idea of where you've been. And then, the last page that I brought down, it's in the red right here, it shows the board what you are looking like if the board was looking at at your current rate at 28 cents, what a 1 cent would do. The red is how much the tax bill will go up, which is $2.50, 2-cent tax increase, and then a 4-cent tax increase. So, 25,000 assessed value, if you did a 4-cent increase, it would increase that tax bill by about $10. But that's just something I wanted to point out real quick for information. I'm sorry, Ms. McGregor.
No, that's fine. I think this, I mean, we need to do this, because we have to take into account the effect it's going to have on our citizens, as well as, but we're doing, what we're doing is for our citizens. We're trying to give people a wonderful place to live and place people are going to want to move to and come and spend their money in, and that raises all of our boat, so to speak.
I think even with 4 cents, though, we still have to make cuts, don't we?
Yeah.
Even with a 4-cent increase, if we were going to, if we all supported that, we still have to make cuts.
Well, that's assuming that we don't take anything out of the fund.
Not, not to any significance. There are one or two things that probably we can cut out, you know?
And if I may, real quick, get back to Ms. Mashburn's point. This does not include the comprehensive plan, land use plan. We received quotes a week ago, and the lowest bid is at 50,000, and it's not comparable to what we're looking for. The highest is at 98,500. Something like that would be an appropriate use of fund balance, because it's definitely a one-time expenditure, and you could actually do that over a period of two years. We're not asking you to do anything with that tonight, but your comp plan will come back up in a couple of months.
And, you know, I made this point last time that we met, but if we do have a tax increase and we have any extra money, I'd like to see some of that used to acquire the services of a grant writer, if it's a contract person or what, because, for example, that money, we might be able to get planning money from a grant source, but that takes somebody's time, and that's money, so.
And we don't have that information available to us to build into this budget.
Yeah.
That's.
That's true.
Yeah. We do have the facilities of Region A, which we can probably put some money into to get some grant work, I think.
Lease?
McGill has a grant writer, do they not? Yes, and they charge a lot.
Denny Martin, I'm sorry.
I mean, it's.
Sorry. I did the same thing.
Shuttle on a name over there somewhere. Yeah. Yes, sir. Kyra, summer, been more truth than advertised in the last years of the forest. Our budget has generally been a little bit closer, as in what they budgeted versus what is spent. Historically, and again, this year, it looks like we're going to be about 120,000, 130,000 under budget, meaning that we're not going to have to go into the fund balance. It used to be we would dip into the, not, usually, we would build the fund balance a whole lot more just by the way they looked at things. I believe what's been presented with a little bit of tweaking on a few things would be very appropriate for this budget year. I would like to look at a 2 millage rate increase, which would be about 120,000, with the belief that through typical years, the, what we would budget under the fund balance of whatever 120, whatever the difference the numbers are, would be the same as what happened this year and last year and most every year. I've not known, I could be standing corrected, I've got about 19 years in, I've not known us to get into the fund balance, although we, most every budget does have some of it in there to balance it on paper. So, I think I would be more inclined to be looking at a 2%. We're going to have a revaluation next year, and that's always monkeys with all of the numbers, so to speak, but I certainly think I could go for 2. I don't think that, I think that just leaves us basically where we are. I don't think it gives us any wiggle room to move ahead. We have, at some point, we're going to have to realize that we're just not a little bitty town anymore, and that we're going to have to face a reality, and one of the realities is, Joe, I really think that 4 is not going to hurt anybody that much, and yet, 2 is not going to do.
anybody that much, and yet two is not going to do much for us.
Where does it go this year? Where does the extra two go?
We just gave that, yeah. With that, it goes to level us out of what we need right now to provide the service level we're getting. Yes, Dave?
I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I don't think we should talk about raising the taxes at all until we find some cuts that we can make. I think that's the responsible thing to do to the people that we represent, is to, is to cut some sort of something before we even think about.
What would you suggest?
Um, I, I don't think we need a bathroom trailer for twenty-three thousand dollars. I think we should look at the nonprofit funding pool of forty thousand dollars. I'm not even sure if it's ethically responsible for us to tax people and then choose who we give that to. I think that we could combine our chamber membership and our fireworks donation into one thing and save about three thousand dollars there. I think the J.C.'s Park, seventy-five hundred bucks to resurface the concrete is too much money. I don't think we should re-roof a gazebo on a property that we don't own and that there is not a lease on currently.
We have, we're waiting now. The lease was approved by the commissioners.
Have we, have we seen a copy of it?
I do not have a copy of it. They have signed off on it.
Okay. So, we don't know if it's acceptable to us yet? Again, I think ten's a little high. I understand we're budgeting for worst-case scenario. Um, there's a couple other things in here where I think we could save a little bit of money and.
Cut Whitmire?
I don't, I think we have to clean that, we have to clean that up.
I mean, I see that as being so important to you, where some of these other services are important to other people.
That's completely fair. I agree with you.
I mean, you know, when you're cutting, and then I'm thinking Whitmire's really important, but, you know.
I'm not opposed to that then. I mean, that has to get done one way or the other, though, anyway. That's on property that we own.
But we don't clean it up if we don't, if people aren't on it. I mean, that's the thing. I mean, I just threw that in, because you got a lot of cuts, and I'm thinking Whitmire.
I just think if we're going to ask people to pay more in taxes, and it's not an outrageous amount more in taxes, we should do our job, and we should do the hard part, and we should look at this budget, and we should say, is that actually worth spending their money on?
There's a lot of that was worth spending money on, right there.
I will tell you, these town employees have worked like dogs, and they have cut everywhere you can cut. Now, I don't know whether you're talking about anything that's frivolous, or whether you're talking about something that basically we almost have an obligation to provide to the people.
A couple, the two biggest ticket items I mentioned, where I think we should look at the nonprofit funding pool, and I think we should look at the bathroom trailer for twenty-three thousand dollars. That's sixty thousand dollars right there. That's a one percent tax increase.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
It's, if we don't have the bathroom, we've got to rent bathrooms for all of the pickings. That does not give us any bathroom for the farmer's market. Yes, it, what we can do, what I, what I would suggest that we could do if we wanted to make this budget, we have money in the contingency fund from this current budget, sufficient to buy a restroom, which would allow us to go ahead and get it on order, get it here, so that we won't have to pay those weekly porta-potties rates. Go ahead and get it on the ground, and actually, it would be out of this budget, but we would have to vote to spend the contingency that we have in our current budget, which is set to expire the end of, of June. When you look at the defraying of the cost of having to rent, and, and the very fact that it is such a superior step-up from porta-potties, which a lot of folks just will not make themselves go into.
What's the longevity on that trailer? It's going to get stored for the winter, it's going to get mice living in there, eating insulation. It's going to be like a two, three season thing.
Aren't we renting it, or are we buying it?
Twenty-three would buy it.
And I want to just say, and I'm talking from, I think the county's been very gracious to allow us to use those bathrooms all those years. I worked in the courthouse, it was a complete disaster at the end of the weekend. County employees had to take care of it, and I think it's the town's responsibility to provide a bathroom for Pickin' on the Square. I know we have, and all the other festivals, and I think we have to bite the bullet whether we build one on some property on that end of town, but I don't want porta-johns.
The people in the town and the county own that bathroom, that's their bathroom. The courthouse bathroom, I own it, you own it, he owns it, the media owns it, we all own that bathroom.
But when you get into town and county things, it, I mean, I think a lot of times people try to keep it so separate. The county had no obligation to provide it for town events.
I think they do, and I'll tell you.
And I don't.
Because every resident of Franklin pays county taxes. The, the people that, that really generally come to the picking are county residents.
And the reason I say that, I've listened to y'all say the county ought to pay for bathrooms. Who's going to pay? The county has paid to keep up those bathrooms. The town's got some responsibility in that, too.
We paid thirty thousand dollars to fund Pickin' on the Square.
But you can't take those elderly people to walk down here.
I'm there, you're sharing the night, you can, and they do.
Hey. Chief, Chief Superior Judge Bill Coward ruled the bathrooms be closed.
That's what we heard, yeah.
So, it's not a matter of us just.
There's nothing we can do about it. We got to solve the problem.
Let me ask you this, was there actually an order signed on that?
I don't know.
I don't either, so. Let me, let me run one thing through here. And, and Joe, I have to tell you, I, this is the one thing that I really do disagree with y'all, and it's the portable bathroom, because I did a little figuring today. We can have two porta-johns for a hundred and forty-three events for what, the first year, for, for buying that gold-plated bathroom.
How tacky is that?
It's, let me, how many times, I have used a porta-john, listen.
I mean, what, David talks about livable, and how livable is a porta-john. Brandon told us a little girl in his class wouldn't go to the porta-john.
But that trailer's going to look like that next year.
Now, it's not.
It'll be great for the summer, but it'll, the lifespan will.
You, you show me that. You show me that.
I haven't used that.
You show me that.
Okay, so there.
No, now, I'm serious, you're sitting there shooting from the hip on that.
Oh, wait a minute.
They give them a twenty-year lifespan.
I'm in charge. Let me, let me throw a couple other things out to you guys. Just a second. There is maintenance on it. Who, which one of our town employees should have to take care of it?
And that's what I'm saying, the county employees have to take care to do the other.
Who's going to take care of the overtime for somebody to bring it up, set it up at Pickin', bring it back down here, maintain it, clean it, when we can get it done for a hundred and sixty dollars per event?
It ain't the same.
And we can do a hundred and forty-three events with two.
Well, let's just have one then. Let's just have one porta-potty. If we're going to cut down and give them a place to go, then we can make it a unisex just to have once, to save some money. It's where your priorities are.
I don't like the porta-potty idea either. We need to look at a long-term solution, and a porta-potty or a trailer, neither one is long-term.
Twenty-three thousand dollars. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Raise your hand, but I do want to say that also includes the hand sanitizer.
Oh, which we have to pay to fill them up.
Well, I, I don't know that.
I'm with Joe on the, on the trailer.
I mean, why couldn't we take it?
You wait for a public outcry. When the public finds out we're spending twenty-three thousand dollars.
It'd be the biggest hit in town.
The women will all love it.
They will all love it.
And they all vote.
It will be the biggest hit we've done.
I hate to say what they, the rants and rags of the porta-johns sitting up there in the middle of town.
We, we have all those facilities. We treat the water, we treat the wastewater. Everything is done. We've got employees working day in and day out.
How many, Chad?
Where are we going to put those chess pieces? We'll find a place to put them.
Oh, tell me. You got, you got a point there, too.
I found a way to pay for the chess pieces without taxed all our money. I got to have a place to put them, though.
It's, it would be the biggest hit.
Joe, it would not, because I don't think it would be, and I'll tell you why. The thing has a staircase. You have to walk up the steps to it. There, there, there you get into your handicap problem. It's, there's only two of them, and I don't know what the capacity of those are, but everybody that has an event around here do use porta-johns, and I honestly do not know, is this going to take a half-salary of one of our employees to maintain this thing? I don't know. All right, you've got to hook it up to some kind of rig, you've got to haul it, you've got to unhook it, you've got to set it up, put the outriggers down. I, I don't know, I've never used one, I've just been.
Give it a chance. We'll sell it, we'll sell it if we don't. If we don't, if we don't fit in our budget, we'll, it's got a good retail.
How much does it cost to rent one for the time being?
Excellent question.
For a month or so?
I do not know that.
Just for, I mean, a trial before we bought it? That would be.
Well, okay, go ahead, sir.
Has anybody had a serious discussion with, with anybody at the county about possibly building permanent restrooms at the backside of Rankin Square, or on the backside of the courthouse next to Martha's Kitchen? There's space to put a couple of, a men's and a women's, or unisex handicap bathrooms somewhere downtown. That would be a long-term solution.
I think something permanent would be the best.
Oh, I think something permanent would be, would be the perfect option if there was somewhere.
I would suggest that y'all contact Hollins about public restrooms open like that. You might get a little bit different idea of what, what happens to some of those permanent. Unless you lock them at five o'clock, you don't want to leave them open at night.
You could just open a prevent tomorrow.
Well, you got to be bulletproof. You got to just, all tile or all block.
They, they would have to be.
They'd have to.
But they'd have, they'd have to have tile.
I agree, the Greenway bathrooms are, you know, they do a really great job of keeping them clean. One guy does that in addition to everything else.
In downtown, they'd be even cleaner, because they're, I mean, you're, you're right there, you're in downtown.
But I, you know, to, every event that you go to around here, when you go to the lazy hike, and they have a big thing, they've got a couple of porta-johns. The thing in West Franklin the other day, that big to do, they had two porta-johns down there. I, I, this is the first group I've ever heard really complaining about porta-johns.
I don't think it's came up.
Because you're not living there, you're there.
We've never had a, a thing to have porta-johns.
Well, I don't like porta-johns, I don't like porta-trailers either. So, I, I don't think either one of them's a long-term viable solution. I think maybe rent one for a season until we can come up with a solution.
Well, if you're going to rent one for a season, go ahead and then just budget it over three years, and if after a year's time it ain't in our budget, we can get back most of what we paid in it, and that will be considered rent.
I have one other hypothetical here. You've got two events going on at the same time. How do you share the?
You may not. You may still have to get porta-johns on certain occasions to cover certain crowds. I mean, it's not a, you know what I mean, it's not a end of the.
If they're okay for some events, why not all of them?
It's financial, it's financial, Bob.
I know, it's.
It's, we, well, what about, what about the farmer's market? Do we, do we support the farmer's market?
I would say we do, they're using a lot of our farmer's market.
Okay, well, let's give Frankie Bowers, I'm in there getting my hair cut, and there's just steady stream, people coming in to go to her bathroom, because there's no bathroom facilities for the, and we can set it, we could, we could have this set up there every Saturday.
We could put a porta-john down there.
I thought that'd be a good location for the portable trailer back in the back.
Is the trailer handicap accessible?
I don't know. I don't think it is.
But neither's a porta-john. Porta-johns aren't handicap accessible.
Yes, they are, yeah.
Depends on which ones you get.
And some are maybe wheelchair accessible.
With an elevator, anyone.
Yeah, that's right.
They have big, wide over there.
Maybe we should just get some big trees.
I guess probably a John Henry, if they don't even be allowed to utilize the trailer if it wasn't ADA.
I'm sure they probably have those, I mean, that has to have been an issue.
We got ADA here at the, at the town hall. You don't, yeah, so you got it, yeah.
And these are open during Pickin'?
These are fold-down aluminum steps and platforms with railings.
And that's, you know, that's the base model. It's just like a vehicle, you can hit whatever bells you want, but it's absolutely.
It's just twelve feet long.
The trailer is twelve feet long, the length?
You get to park it near a water hookup, or it has its own water?
It has its own water where you can park.
I think it does.
It's got a whole tank, like three fifty.
Has a porch light.
What about a flag? I, I guess I'm pretty adamant, again, I, I go along with Mr. Culpepper on this. When our police department is short of vehicles, and we've got three guys trying to run around in an old, beat-up, horrible embarrassment of a pickup truck to the town, and we're wanting to put twenty-three thousand dollars in something that we can rent for a hundred and sixty dollars an event and have the same amount of storage and what have you as this, as the, I just cannot in good conscience say that I could support it, but I don't have a vote on it, so.
But we're not saying we not, we're going to do this instead of a police.
That's what I thought. We hadn't cut that.
We're not cutting the police.
We're trying to add another one to take up the slack.
They want to.
We actually need two.
I think what Barbara's saying is that the trailer isn't going to eliminate getting a police car, or what.
I mean, it's in there.
It's half of the, it's the half of the cost of a police car.
I've already said I'm for the four cents, so.
Whatever y'all want to do, it's y'all, I don't have a vote in, y'all. Make the decision on your.
Well, can we go to something simpler? Can, can we start by combining the Chamber of Commerce fireworks donation and dues? Or is that a hot ticket item, too?
That's up to the board, and that'd also probably be a discussion with the Chamber.
Would we handle that as like, if, if somebody has something they want to bring
it to a vote tonight, to remove it or leave it in?
Yes, because we'll need to have something for our, our June board meeting.
So, would you like to make a motion on the, on the Chamber?
Well, who has discovered Franklin?
That's the TDA's website.
I mean, I, I don't know, I'd probably get strangled by somebody at Chamber of Commerce, but I think spending three thousand dollars a month on a chamber membership and then giving them four thousand dollars, thank you on fireworks, is duplicitous.
Well, it's not the only, the fireworks aren't the only thing.
Three thousand a year, I'm sorry.
Fireworks is just four thousand.
Shoot their wad, and they're gone, but man, it's, it's fireworks.
I, no, I love our fireworks. That's why I think we should give four thousand dollars for the fireworks, and they should give us a free membership.
Well, I mean, they have a lot of other things that they do besides.
I, I'm a member, but I don't think I pay three thousand dollars a year. I just, I don't, I don't know where that figure comes from.
I think it's based off of a corporate rate. That's just, it's been there, I hate to use the aesthetic, as long as I've been here that they've paid that.
Okay, so it's just never been challenged before?
Correct.
Because we've never gotten down to.
Yes.
Three thousand dollar lineups before?
Yes.
Welcome, David Culpepper, to the budget session. Um, okay, J.C.'s Park, seventy-five hundred dollars to refinish the, the concrete. Um, I, I don't know, I mean, that, that sounds like a lot to me, to refinish the concrete. I'd rather see a bridge going from the sidewalk in there than, than that, but that's a priority.
You could, but the bridge would probably be about twenty or thirty thousand. The only thing with this, the, it's become, you know, a lot of people use that park. I know Mr. Collins, and I've been down there quite a bit lately. It, it was an old shuffleboard court, if I'm not mistaken, so it's retaining a lot of water, and it's causing it to be stagnant with mosquitoes. You've got kids under there. We did solicit four quotes, and of the four quotes, that was the cheapest one we got.
And that's poor and coven, that's just kind of ground and the edges down to.
Yeah.
So, it's not redoing it, it's.
No, it's totally redoing it.
Okay.
Yeah. And having a connection to, when you walk out the back door, you step right into a mud hole. This would actually connect your back door to that area, to where people could take their food in and out if they're having an event there.
And my thing about that is, we've spent a lot of time, and I'm not trying to pick on you about Whitmire, but we've spent a lot of time talking about Whitmire. If we can't keep up J.C. Park, then we don't need to take on anything else. That park's been there, it's, it's been there forever, and it needs to, it doesn't look that nice.
I have.
And it, so, it needs to be.
That's why I just question if, if that's our best use of seventy-five hundred bucks on, on, on concrete. I like the park, I think we need to use the park, we need to fund the park, but to get through this budget...
But our manager has done the research, he's got the quotes, that's the number.
Fair enough.
Well, yeah, we can't sit down here and...
Yeah.
I feel like they've just pared it down as much as they can.
Yeah.
Personally.
However, any million-dollar budget, $7,500 to take care of one of our finest assets, I don't think is...
Fair enough, I love the J.C. Park, we need to fund it more, but for this budget, we don't have that ability. Is the nonprofit funding pool, is that untouchable?
No.
It's not only untouchable, I'm not sure that it's, somehow it's legal. There was a recent article, I gave it, I want to get a copy of it, I think, Kim Hibbert, the legal counsel of the League of Municipalities. The article is about the giving of funds to private entities, taxpayer funds, and she made quite a few very, very interesting points. Some of that, reading her article and discussing it with her, you have to meet the public purpose test. And the state is very iffy on what we can give to. There are some things that the state's not worried about, like rescue squads, people that perform a service for the town, they don't worry about, but what they're worried about, you know, things like your team, I shouldn't be naming any particular things, but there are certain organizations that it's kind of murky whether we really have a right to be giving to those with taxpayer funds. Anything we do on education, they don't really question that much, but you do have to get certified accounting audits on some of these organizations if you give them town money over $1,000.
Well, should it just be the, if we do these nonprofit applications, then part of the decision-making process is we have this checklist?
Well, yeah, and the municipality must have the authority to undertake or directly fund a specific service or activity itself before it can appropriate funds to another entity to perform that service or activity. So, it would be up to you guys if you wanted to fund it or not, or leave it like it is, where they go through a vetting process, and we go through those very, very closely. And then it comes back to the board, and the board makes final decisions.
How long's that, how long's that been?
It's a long time.
I mean, I figured it had been, but I just...
And it's never really been questioned, although some of the applicants have been questioned closely, and one of the things you have to get very, very careful about are faith-based organizations.
Obviously, if it remains in our budget, and then we get the opinion from our council that beyond what is legality, we would just have to stop, you know, and not spend it right yet.
I've talked to John about it, we talked about this, it's a link, and I think he has talked with Kim Hibbert about it as well. We're on kind of thin ice with it right now, because since this came out, other towns has set up to, they need to take a real close look at nonprofit funding. But that would be up to this board, y'all. We still have our vetting process that they have to go through, they have to go through an application process, they have to provide us minutes from directors' meetings. It's pretty, we run a pretty tight shift, very tight shift, really. Yes, Brandon?
So, at that last NCLM conference that we went to, and we met that gentleman from Canton, was it town manager?
Yes, sir.
The town manager of Canton said that they took that money and started doing a, correct me, a match program to improve Main Street businesses.
Yes, sir.
Using those same funds, like, if the business owner agrees to put up X dollars, then the town matches it up to a certain amount to improve the physical structure of your business, using funds that may have previously been used for that purpose.
Another thing...
That was a pretty cool idea.
It's a very good idea.
I thought about it a little bit too, is a revolving loan program, taking that $40,000 and making it for cosmetic improvements to buildings, I don't think we can make a lot of structural thing, but if we could do things that would change the appearance, and it would take rehabilitation of old buildings or repurposing, if we could help in some way with low-income loans, likely Habitat or something. I think a couple of examples right now, the Orkin plant, the Orkin Building, and then what John Hamlin has done with the old house.
Yes.
Those, if we could help on things like that.
And I believe it was more for cosmetic stuff.
It was, yeah, you can't really get into it, because you're, I guess you're improving their structure.
Facade grant.
Facade grant.
That's exactly right, yeah. Well, where are we?
I'd love to do all that stuff, I'd love to fund the budget as it is, but I think it's my responsibility to make some sort of cuts before we raise taxes. I mean, it just, I think it behooves me to do that.
Summer's made a lot of cuts.
I was going to say...
I don't disagree, she cut up the whole position.
$71,500 and cuts, I think have already been made. Yes, sir.
Over $70,000 already.
For the last three years, four years, the budget has been the best I've ever seen presented to the town council. It's, I remember one time when somebody just came up with arbitrary finger and threw it out, and that pretty much was it, you know?
I may have missed though, how many years you been on the budget, Karen?
Three, four.
Was I mistaken in that on each of these years, we've overestimated or whatever, our general fund balance didn't have to get invaded, or has it been invaded?
It had, it had up until about five years ago, when the board increased, because what had been happening was the town was using some of their fund balance, and you know, over the past five years, we've tried not to do that.
But during the past five years, we haven't used our fund balance, is that correct?
That's correct.
Although at each budget cycle, we did have a number in there.
Yes, sir. We've actually also, in the first year in 2015, 2016, we made a contribution of $60,000 to your fund balance.
Where do we stand? Did you want to make a motion?
Nobody sees any cuts to the thing.
See anywhere?
No.
Well, I can...
I'm sorry, Bob.
No, go right ahead, sir.
I was going to say, it's just that Summer and Karen have already gone through and cut so much that, I don't know, I feel like the cutting has already been done for us.
Of that opinion.
I appreciate what you're trying to do, I really, really do understand where you're coming from.
Well, I just, the thing that concerns me the most, the only thing that I'm going to harp on is that portable bathroom, because I don't think anything's been taken into consideration about the maintenance, the employee's going to have to maintain, how it's going to get there, what we're going to do when there's a conflict of where it's going to go, and I don't think you've taken in consideration, I've been around Franklin a long time, I don't think the public's going to buy, quite frankly, not when we've got other needs. And I said, I don't think there's anything frivolous in the budget whatsoever, that's the only exception I have, is the portable restroom, I think everything else is pretty well thought out.
Can I ask a second question?
Yes, ma'am.
Summer, do you have any idea, or any idea, maybe you have to pull something out of the air, how many people a year come to Pickens, festivals, farmer's markets, all these things that would be users of this facility? Could you even...
Pumpkin Fest alone, we generate at least 5,000 to 6,000, and then Mayor Scott could might speak on the crowds at Pickens.
I'd say between 500 and 600.
Each week.
And then the Eclipse, we estimate, and the town...
That's not going to happen again.
We won't have that one for a while.
Well, we're going to have it on the weekend, this time. Listen, the town and the county work together on the bathroom situation for, and it worked beautifully.
Well, that's still, well, that's still happening.
There were porta-johns.
No, not that clear.
Eclipse?
No, 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 Pumpkin Fest.
You may be here.
No, Pumpkin Fest is a town event. I understand that, but I know the courthouse bathrooms were open for that, can they be open for a daytime event?
I don't know that answer, I don't have that.
Well, they are open for a daytime event if it's during the week.
The week, key word, I think.
Not weekend, but not weekend, not a Saturday.
Not at night.
Uh-uh.
We have used porta-johns, we've had them on St. York Street.
Of course we can use porta-johns, of course we can, we just want to do better.
If we have another six, do you really think that your portable restroom would serve Pumpkin Fest?
No, I don't, no, I don't think it would.
Then what do we do?
Well, then we may have to get some porta-johns for Pumpkin Fest.
Then you've got people at both ends of the street.
Yeah, that's right.
I think you've got, you know, kind of levels out, it can sort of...
I'm hesitant to make a move on a purchase at large until we've totally exhausted the possibility of a permanent structure. If we have completely exhausted the possibility of an actual bathroom facility being built, then I would be more open to the trailer idea, but until that possibility has been exhausted thoroughly, I'm hard to, I'm going to have a hard time passing on that trailer.
Maybe we can get Franklin to do their survey.
Hey, I can tell you this then, let's put that amount of money in the budget for bathrooms.
He literally was...
For bathrooms, and if we want to explore in the next while whether we can use that mu, I would much prefer to have, I have always, Bob, I have always wanted to work out a deal with J.C. or Janet to, one of those side buildings that come over time and time, to put bathrooms in there, a little kiosk for the, oh, that would be preferable.
The problem is, is that the one blessing that you have on your side with the portable one is it's portable.
That's true, everything's got, everything's got pluses and minuses.
And it could move down to the farmer's market, it could...
Yeah.
It is, I don't...
Everything's got pluses and minuses.
People just need to stop going to bathrooms, that's the problem.
At one point, wasn't information coming down from the county that they felt bad about the courthouse bathrooms getting closed, they may look at helping build a bathroom on the square somewhere, wasn't that talked about?
It was talked about by us, I think.
They felt bad about it.
I mean, because I just, again, we don't own the properties.
Let's put 25,000 in for bathrooms, period, or 23, whatever the number is, and if we can, in the next, you know, and go ahead and do our work, let's don't just, you know...
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
I think that's a great compromise, I really do.
And then continue to use the porta-johns.
Yeah, because it's reasonable in the meantime.
And taking it out, that amount out, it's not going to make that much of a difference in the overall budget.
And then, that doesn't work when you get the hiking club to build a privy.
A privy.
Experts at it.
We could call it authentic privy.
That's right.
I'd rather have that in a porta-john.
So, unless I'm, wait, I wouldn't say...
Well, it'd be a...
You're not going to ask for more than 5,000 for the, I thought you might.
Well, I might ask, but if that's all I can get, I'll take it.
But that said, I think what we're down to is figuring out what, whether it be two, three, or four cents on the military, I think that's what we're down to, isn't it? Unless I'm missing other, other...
No, I think that's where we are at, and I would, again, like to make a three and beg y'all to go with the four cents, we've just got to have it, because two's just going to leave us where we are.
One advantage is, I mean, we have to go through this every year, we've done a half a cent here, a cent there, a cent there, you know, just like, you know, not wanting to, if we could do four cents, that would probably just do it.
Fair.
Can we take a sort of revaluation?
But next year's revaluation, so the numbers could be different next year.
Well, we'll have to change anyway, no matter what happens.
That's what I'm saying, but that's where they, that's where they generally works out to be an increase.
And it may, or, I don't know.
But it's kind of like, if you're going to bite the bullet, just bite it for the bigger chunk, and...
And next year, make it revenue neutral, whatever the, whatever the revaluation is.
But I'll entertain a petition as to what village rate we want to go, if y'all think it's time we can do that.
I want to hear from you two. You're down, I'm at two, I think, I don't know, you're lower than me probably, but you got to do something, we got to do something.
Let's hear Brandon, I'm sorry.
Actually, I'm convinced on the four. You know, last time we got together like this, I said that I wanted to see where that money was going before I was comfortable making a decision, and here it is. I believe that I'm convinced on the four is an increase, I really think we need it. I think the town can do a lot of good with it and continue the services that we provide. You know, being in public education, I know what it's like to be asked to do more with less, and so I suppose I sympathize with the town employees for that reason, and not only that, but just continuing to provide services to the people in town, I'm comfortable with the four. Thank you, sir.
Whether taxes are too high or too low is a statement that can't really be made, because you have to look at the services that are provided. You could have a tax rate that's too high and be very low, cent-wise, if not provide any services. My fear, whether we do a two-cent, four-cent, three-cent, one-cent, it's not a sustainable way to run a municipality, to have to increase taxes to cover budgetary concerns. There needs to be a long-term strategic plan of how we won't have to raise taxes in five or six years, whether that's getting more people in the corporate limits of town, whether that's by a reevaluation that shows property values are up. Knowing that a tax increase would be a last-case scenario, and it's not a budgetary tool that can be pulled out every year, makes it more comforting to digest a tax increase. I still have reservations though, because we have got, it's our job to make sure we're providing quality services to our residents, and that we're not just using a tax increase, using their money to cover our lack of doing our job. That being said, I think our staff, Summer and Karen, have done a wonderful job culling it down. So, I could probably go for the two, I don't know about the four, but let's listen to Donna and see what she has to say.
Well, I am torn between the two and the four, but I'm with Brandon, when we came together the first time, I didn't know what to expect, I didn't know how the whole budget processed, and you started talking about the taxes, I didn't have any idea what we needed, I mean, I didn't know that, and I don't think that we're not doing our job, I think we're just still trying to provide what people expect, and so I am a little torn on the proper thing to do, but I do feel we need to raise taxes. I don't think there's anything there, you've done exactly what you were supposed to do, and you've worked real hard at it, both of y'all have, and I think what you've presented are essential things that we need to continue with, so that's where I'm at.
I was going to say, I don't necessarily think anyone is not doing their job, I certainly don't think the town employees are not doing their job, and I don't think that our job is to raise taxes, and I don't think that our job is to not raise taxes, our job is to make very difficult decisions that we think will best benefit the town, and that's what we're doing right here, right now, I don't think anyone is...
No, I kind of, a little, and I may not have phrased it right, but something you said about, you know, our responsibility and all of that, I think our responsibility, I mean, at some point, somebody has to raise taxes, I mean, and it just happens to be that this, I mean, we're still way lower than most places in western North Carolina, and...
Would you not say too, I think one thing that's changing is that we've done about 180-degree change in culture, what people are expecting from the town, the culture of the town is changing, you come downtown now, and there's not a parking, it's as busy almost at night as it is during the day now, and it may vary anymore.
And it doesn't matter what we do, somebody's not going to be happy.
Oh, that's true.
I mean, that's...
That's why I'm willing to take them.
I mean, it's not.
Don't blame you.
Yes, Barbara.
I just wanted to say, you know, unfortunately, we have limited means for raising money other than taxes, there just aren't that many things that we can do, it's not like we can open a factory and start running, you know, turning out bottled water or something, we just, we have, our hands are tied.
And David reminded us on there, the only way that we can annex is totally voluntary, we're no longer, by state statute, can involuntary annex.
Well, it's like the Verbena situation, it's already in our annexation policy that they're supposed to become part of the corporate limits by agreeing to give water and sewer, so we just need to follow those policies, and we will grow that way, and we have grown that way, and that is one way to help the general fund.
I agree.
Joe, when was, when was the last time that we actually expanded the city limits? Can you remember?
I can't either.
We've been...
2013.
If we went a quarter of a mile in every direction, we'd double our...
2013 was your last annexation, that was Sloan Road, because that was the last one.
And then you go down the middle of the road and...
It's very strange, I'll leave it at that.
Yes, Mr. Reddick.
I was going to say, if we want... I was gonna say, if we, if we wanna grow, and I'm sure we all do, I feel that the way to do it is to beautify the town, make it more livable, and offer the best possible services that we can offer, which unfortunately all require.
Many.
Money, and as you said, there's only really one way that we're gonna get it.
Let me ask y'all this, if y'all made the same observation, at one time, we were getting to be known strictly as a retirement community. Are y'all seeing that turnaround?
Oh, yes, sir.
I am. I'm seeing a turnaround tremendously, the young people that are coming back, uh, the ones that are moving in.
Or choosing not to leave.
Are choosing not to leave.
We're still getting retirees, but I think you're right about more younger people coming in.
It's a shift.
One of the things I have talked to Habitat about, there are a lot of those retirees that have died, and the children don't want the property. If they would give it to, uh, Habitat and let Habitat rehabilitate some of these places that have been abandoned, uh, and, and there are quite a few of them now. You can start down the Georgia Road, uh, it's amazing, but if we could get, Joe.
I've got the little bathroom there and that, so.
Oh.
Wait, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get us, I know, yeah, I'm gonna get us out of here. So the, uh, proposal for the utility increase is what percent?
Based on a five percent.
Five percent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we've suggested putting the twenty-three thousand into a separate account?
We can leave it under capital improvements, because.
Well, that still give us money to pay for the damn porta-potties until we decide what else we're gonna do? I mean, is there money in there somewhere in there?
We can, yeah, we can find it.
Well, with, with that understanding, uh, it appears that, you know, four cents, in my opinion, the way I talk with the two percent and with our expectations of how the budget runs, that will actually be a balance, not on paper, and if the worst you can do is build a little bit more.
Yes.
In, in reserves, so I'll make the motion, uh, to that effect. Does that cover all of our points? It covers utilities, it covers the, the restroom, it covers the millage rate. Is that all we need?
What was your millage rate proposal?
Four. I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
I think it covers everything, does it?
And I don't want it, but.
Yes.
Well, and I, I'm, I'm torn on what to.
If you don't want it, and you don't want it, and she split, I don't know if we're.
Well, then, that's just a motion. It's just a motion. I'd love for somebody to.
Well, you know, it's just.
Just make your motion.
Yeah.
Do it again.
I'll second your motion.
No, that's fine. I think the motion was sort of the, the five percent on the, whatever was suggested on the utility.
For public works.
For the budget as presented, with the adjustment on the, on the restroom, and with the, uh, with the four millage rate increase. It hurts me, but somebody's gotta do it.
Keep the motion out there, but I do have one question, because I think it came up a lot in the last time, that we hadn't really addressed tonight, the sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to be something that the street, that they are going to be able to do, a lot of sidewalk?
Yes, ma'am. In the, you know, we recently had an employer retire with over forty years of service, so in the meantime, we've been, um, looking for a replacement. Um, I know they did interviews last week, and in part of that job description for the crew leader replacement, we put in there that they needed to be able to form and have concrete experience, so we could take on these projects. Um, if I may add one more thing, Joe, that we didn't talk about, is your TDA really quick. Um, you've noticed, you've got some handouts right here. There's one addition to that. Last night, we had a TDA meeting here. Their proposed budget revenue from Kyra and I is estimated at a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. The TDA is wanting to appropriate some of their fund balance, they're requesting six thousand dollars from their fund balance to bring their budget to a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
And we need to.
That's one, that'd be the only other thing that's to, to look at tonight.
So would I need to modify my motion?
Yes, sir.
To approve that?
As presented.
And before you modify that, what about, and I know it may not have anything to do about the chamber thing, but about what both of y'all said about the TD, the fireworks?
Uh, I mean, at this point, I don't think that matters. I was just trying to, I was trying to save enough money to, to knock a cent off.
Yeah.
But if we're not gonna knock a, a cent off, then there's no need to. It's not worth ruffling the feathers at the Chamber of Commerce to cut that three thousand dollars out, if we're not gonna go for some serious cuts, so.
Would, would there be any objection, ask, can the TDA, if they might pick up that four for day hand, what, you say?
You can ask, I can't, I hate to say that.
Yeah, I mean, it had been brought up, and I'm, I'm saying, let's get it all out there.
This, this hurts, this.
I know, I don't.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor, and I think Mrs. McRae's seconded it to raise the rate to four, four cents, based on the restroom, twenty-three thousand dollars going into sort of an escrow account.
Capital improvements, it'll, it'll just remain there.
Till we can further look into a permanent facility. Does that prove a favor?
It does, but if that does, we're gonna look quick, too.
And, and let me just tell you, I'm gonna say this, right here, in the open, my big thing is, we're gonna raise taxes, and then we're gonna set Porta-Johns out on the street. It ain't gonna, it, it's gonna be bad.
It'll be ugly.
It's gonna be very ugly, and that's my whole thing about lining up. If I didn't have that bathroom thing in there, I mean, just think about it.
You prefer to modify it to make it the, could we go, if we're gonna go the four, if we're gonna go the, the full money, can we go ahead and?
I mean, just think about it. You, you're, and, and I, it's not anything, it's a situation that has to be dealt with, that you, that it's gonna get out there, we raise taxes four percen, four cents, and then in that first Pickin', there gonna be Porta-Johns sitting out there.
The, the, actually, there have not been Porta-Johns there, and the restrooms worked up.
What?
Where'd they go?
Coming down here.
Down here. I'm at Pickin' almost every Saturday night.
Well, I mean, it's not, it's not, I went for many, many years and have it.
Recently.
But I mean, it's not started back this year.
It starts in next week?
That's what I'm talking about, when it starts, and there are Porta-Johns after we've said we're raising taxes. That's what I'm getting at.
Well, they've got a place to go they didn't have before.
Yeah.
Temporary, temporary.
Temporary.
But I mean, we get ready for the backlash.
Yeah.
Hey, well, the three thousand go a long way towards starting on a, on a bathroom project.
If we had a place.
If we had somewhere to put it.
Because I think that we're receptive, the county, I, I wanna say was receptive to the idea of, of helping us out of this pickle, since we're hosting an event on their property. Um, they've had to close the courthouse, uh, bathrooms. I think that, I think they're receptive to the idea, and the twenty-three thousand may go towards a permanent bathroom.
I, I think they are, yes, yes, sir.
Donna, here's how I'm gonna explain it to you, 'cause I'm with you. They didn't bite on taking the money out of the contingency, this budget, which we have, which would have allowed us to go ahead and get the portable restrooms now. So we can't get them till July anyway, because our budget, if it's voted in, will not come in until July first. We've got plenty of time between May fifteenth and June fifteenth to figure out if there is any way to get a permanent restroom. If not, then we're gonna be asking that go ahead and put one on order and get it in early in July, whenever our budget hits, but we're not, yeah.
Would that come before the council to vote on spending that money on the porta-potty trailer?
We're voting it.
To put it in there.
If we do not, if we cannot locate permanent restroom facilities, that's my understanding.
Within a month.
Reasonable time.
I think my understanding, and y'all correct if it's wrong, we're setting it aside for a certain length of time, while we explore the options of what we could possibly do on a permanent type bathroom, with the understanding that we will revert right back to this in time to get it ordered for the, for our season.
If the understanding is, it, it, if we cannot in a reasonable period of time locate a permanent one, that we would go in that direction.
But now, even if.
Yeah, and I, and I know it's all the, I'm just saying, it gets out, we're raising taxes, and then you got Porta-Johns sitting on the street, that's what I.
I, I think we beat this horse a little, that's, that's the way we need to, I need approval of the motion I wanna. Yes, sir.
One more thing to add, is even if we find a spot, let's say the county says, yeah, let's build a bathroom along the corner, it's gonna take a year to build the bathroom. So if, if, if we're gonna have a bathroom in a year, it may not make sense to buy a
porta-potty for eight.
That's what I'm saying.
Of course, of course.
Uh, yeah, let's, let's call for the vote.
We'll just keep the money in there until we have.
Mr. Collins, let's, let's call for the vote on the, whether we're gonna go for four cents or not, based on Mr. Collins's motion. All in favor? Part of that, all opposed. Let the record show, it was a four and one, but, uh, if the lease comes down from the county, I understand there were, there were, there were two things that we sort of agreed to when the issue of whether we would have alcohol on the gazebo came up. That issue was addressed, and the county's okay. If it comes down, does the board authorize me to go ahead and sign it? If that was the, uh, main issue, we've got that resolved with our attorney and their attorney to go ahead and sign it, so we, we know that we have the gazebo when Pickin' gets started.
Sure. You know, do you need a motion?
I don't know, I think.
Just a consensus?
Consensus would be, since we already approved it with.
What are the changes that we know of to it?
I, I think that's the only, that was the only objection, was the, yes, Mr. Collins?
I've gotta be the lawyer, since John's not here.
Uh-huh.
That's not appropriate for this meeting, it's just a budget meeting, and that's just a general, that's just, we're not here for a regular town board meeting, it's just here for a call meeting, for the purpose of the budget. We're gonna have to make that decision in our June meeting.
Can't we give him just a, a consensus?
I don't think we can take action here at this meeting, except what we've done for the budget, that's what was called for.
I know, but didn't we already sign the lease, and then went up to them, and they had a change?
Maybe so, I don't think that we appropriately can vote on that tonight.
Okay, uh.
I don't have any trouble with it philosophically, but procedurally, I don't think we can get into areas that are.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may, um, you, you both are correct, because typically during the procedures, we shouldn't, the council shouldn't vote on things that are not at the agenda, but Mayor Scott, you're correct in that this will come back up, because at the last meeting, um, with the original motion from the council, if I'm correct,